The invocation tonight will be led by Ashley Shoemaker and the pledge by Steve. Please stand.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for allowing us to gather here safely tonight. We continue to pray for our community in health and in spirit during this ongoing pandemic. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions here for our citizens tonight and traveling overseas on our way home. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Establishment of form, we have six of six. Adoption of agenda. It's going to be one slight change here. Under new business, we're going to move case number three in front of the three solar projects.
Move to approve as a change.
Five seconds.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. Approval of minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. Public comments.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up for public comment this evening.
Old business.
The old business before us is case 21 SUP 289. The landowner is mom of farm located at 12994 Howardsville Road, Howardsville, Virginia, 24562. The applicant, Ewan Fuller, authorized cellco partnership agent located at 1111 East Main Street, Suite 1905 in Richmond, Virginia, 23219. Property information is tax map 13 parcel 12, contains approximately 300.92 acres located at the 12994 Howardsville Road, Howardsville address, which is on State Route 602 and then the James River Metro District. It's currently zoned A1. The request was to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing a 199-foot monopole communications tower, which is the reason for the public hearing.
Well, I guess we'll close the public hearing if no one wants to speak on it. Is there anybody? And we close the public hearing. Did somebody want to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come up to the podium. State your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing, but that is your call as chairman to...
That'll be fine, we'll hear it.
Just a quick comment. I am the proprietor, I suppose you could say, of my own farm. My wife is actually the trustee for that farm. Her family's on it. Her family's on that land since about 1758. And I prefer it... Prefer the land to look like it did in 1758 with no tower there. But I also understand that this quarter of the county who live has a great dearth of communication. I see people in my driveway very frequently because it's a hotspot. And if you want to... If anyone is upset about the tower itself and the appearance, if you want to have an island, you got to break a few eggs. Tower is... The ugly tower is the eggs.
We're going to make it as pretty as possible.
So, I hope so. So, there's a safety issue, there's a convenience issue. I don't know if the planning commission has been confronted with people complaining about cable in the ground so that they can get high-speed internet. I think they also want high-speed communications. Probably what I needed to say, just so someone would say something.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir.
Birdy man, better make it birdy. Don't even want to say it, want to disappear. We'll talk about buffers at some other time here in about five minutes. Y'all want to come on up to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Want to make your...
Yes, sir. We can make a very brief presentation.
Very brief, yes.
I will present the class. Thank you, Ms. Edmonds and Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission. My name is Mark Prunval, I'm with Roth Jackson, and we represent Verizon. I'm also tonight with God's name is Talon, who's my colleague at Roth Jackson, and Sean Baman, who's with BCI, also representing Verizon. As you know, we're here for the Howardsville proposed tower. This matter is in A1 district, so this is an SUP. It's a heavily wooded, heavily forested, 300-acre property is the location, although there is some brush in the property to the southeast. And we have proposed... So if you turn to... If you have your report, let's go to the... Oh, yeah. If we can turn to about the third or fourth slide, let's go to Z1. So Z1, that shows the entire lot. What you're seeing, the lines are sort of topography. And if you see on your laptop, you can see a scallop line that shows the tree line. If we can go to Z2, you can see that it is again the scalloped area that's outside the fence shows the existing tree line. You can see that we have proposed some landscaping on all of the sides that face brush that do not face the existing forested area. So if... Please turn to Z3. Thank you. So our... The last case that we saw was a lattice tower. This tower, this tower that we are proposing is a monopole, which is much more attractive. In your file, you can see it's a battleship gray. It's the natural color of the metal. We find through lots of things, through practice, that that is the color most likely to, like a battleship, blend into the background of the sky and that other colors will not do so. The monopole is an enhancement over the lattice in terms of appearance. So we're very glad to be presenting a 199-foot monopole tower to you tonight. If you could go to the next slide, please. You can see... So who will this serve? The nearest tower is seven miles away. So that means that nobody within the 15 square miles around the tower have service unless they're lucky enough by an accident of topography to get into a hotspot as we just heard. So the residents in this area in Buckingham County are the first people who are going to be served. Folks who are traveling through the county to do business here or who are wayfinding or trying to find their way to a destination in the county, those folks are going to be helped. There are a total of six arrays for this tower. So that means that five other companies can co-locate here. So if you don't have Verizon, there's an opportunity for your carrier to provide service on this tower with one of the other locations. And most importantly, emergency personnel. This area is not served. You know, if you are somewhere remote, if you're out in the woods away from your landline and you have an emergency, there's... None of the citizens in this area, the county, are able to do anything if they don't have cell service. So with cell service, they'll be able to do that. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the red dots on this show the locations where you can actually see the tower. And we wanted to just let you know, we do think that appearance is important. And so what we've done, as your ordinance requires, we've provided photos simulations that show the height. So the red dots due south on Howardsville Road, west on Logan Road, that's 653, and also James River at the 602 Bridge are a couple of locations. And if we could move ahead with the next couple of slides. So that shows for a previous study that that balloon is way up at 250. Let's go to the next slide still. So we reduced it. So note this slide shows a lattice tower, it's actually going to be a monopole. So I want to be clear. And then here's the next one at 250, and it's going to be a little lower. The next slide, please. And that's actually the height that you'll see from... That is a Logan Road. Let's go to the next one, please. And so this is James River at 602. Next one, please. And then you can barely see it right over the trees. So your comp plan, whenever you have an SUP, the basis for an SUP decision is your comp plan, your comp plan that you adopted, Chapter 3, does call for the enhancement for the benefit of the citizens of your wireless network. That's exactly what we're doing here. And I'd also like to share some good news that we have ended up sharing, able to share with a couple of you. We are searching in the centauri general area to locate along Route 20. A potential, once we get a lease, get an application package together, we'll be able to come to you with an application just like this one for a tower hopefully there. It would really blend in the service area from this area towards and covering Route 20. And also we'll be locating on an existing tower that you've already approved from a different company that's down further on Route 60, that will be a little east, heading east out of Spruce's Park. So we would ask for your approval tonight. We're happy to answer any questions and we're grateful for your time and consideration.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
You said that the battleship gray was the color that blends in best.
Yes, sir.
Is it a flat finish or a gloss finish?
It'll be a flat finish.
Flat finish.
So it's the natural finish of the metal.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So there will be no shine. And also it's not lit. So unless FAA changed its rules.
Now, our owner applicant over there, our owner anyway, was concerned about the thing looking nice. Y'all in agreement with that color?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's your end of my questions. Anybody else have any?
I had one.
Yes, sir.
Oh, P1.
Yes, sir.
Are they power lines going across there? What I'm seeing, or my... Where you have the balloon marker?
Yeah, those are existing power lines.
Is that a problem with the tower?
No, sir. That's a 300 acre parcel. That's just a trickle.
It just looks close.
Yeah. Those are much closer than the tower. So they're not even... They're not even close enough to be shown on any of our target drawings.
It just seemed to be closer looking at the tower.
And it's an important point to note that those... None of the towers for the power lines are tall enough to put an array on to get any kind of level of service. So we did do a search for other locations, and within five miles of this location, there's no steeple or no other tower that's tall enough to have successful coverage. It's a great question.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I still do have a question. All right. This will improve service for Verizon customers?
Well, anybody, anybody that gets service will get it. And for any additional... I don't have the details of what any other carrier would be, but it's... Whenever they switch to roaming and they're... But we have more than our usual number of co-locations on this. Sometimes it'll be two, sometimes it'll be three. This tower has five opportunities for any other user or carrier in the market to locate. And that would just be a simple... That'd be a simple lease with Verizon, and that would be a simple administrative application to you at the county.
Okay. And just because I'm... One, I have Verizon service. Two, I know this location up close and personal. And sir, if you have cameras at your gate, I was in your gate yesterday, okay? Just so that... Just so that you know.
You're welcome.
And I looked at the area, and I was just wanting to see what it was going to look like.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, just in case. But... And there is no service. And there are few spots where I can stop and get service. And that's why I wanted to know where the roads were and how much of Buckingham was actually being covered.
It's been as 15.2 square miles of Buckingham County that's covered, which is a lot of residents that don't have service now.
Oh, they have service, but it's not Verizon. Okay, just... They have service, but not Verizon. But even there, it's very spotty in that area.
The cityscape has... City approved.
Pardon?
Cityscape has approved what we are looking at here. They wanted to add some more. And I think you've already added, and you did two more. But you answered on...
I think that we said that a couple of... That's already in the...
You've already added, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the emergency service.
Emergency?
What are you talking about, emergency services?
Well, that used to be a normal thing. It used to always add it.
Of all the towers.
Where one of the towers can be for the camera.
So I regret to share that it's against state law to require the emergency services as a condition. However, Verizon always is willing to work with locality. We have five openings here. But there is... We just ask that locality follow the process and make the application. So there's plenty of room, and you are welcome. And we just... It's against state law and I found a condition with... The state law changes about two and a half years ago.
It used to be a normal thing.
Yes, sir.
We can worry about that. So I'll see if I can make a motion, do we approve?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move forward unanimously. New business. First case, thank you.
The new move the agenda server agenda introduction under new business tonight. We will start with introduction of case 21 ZTA SUP 287. Our landowner, James and Carl Burmaster, property is located at 5481 Mount Rush Highway, Dillon, Virginia, 23936. Our applicants tonight are James Burmaster and Michelle Saltis. Property information is tax map 158 parcel 11. It contains approximately 104.7 acres. It is on State Route 24 in the Mayesville District. It's currently zoned A1 agricultural. The request tonight is to add a zoning text amendment for an outdoor event venue in agricultural A1 zoning district and to obtain a special use permit for that purpose. The applicants are asking the planning commission to recommend a public hearing date for this request. The zoning ordinance does not permit an outdoor event venue as permitted by right use but or by special use permit in an A1 zoning district. As I mentioned, the request is to add this one text amendment to our list of special use permits in an A1 district or outdoor event venue and obtain that special use permit for this specific purpose. Should an outdoor event venue be added as a zoning text amendment, the following definition is offered. "Any event for which admission is charged at or which goods and services are sold and having or projecting more than 500 attendees but less than 5,000 attendees. Events as such would not exceed a maximum duration of one day open to the attending public. This event would also require a temporary event permit. Temporary event permit shall be due and evaluated by the zoning director 90 days prior to the event to determine if any substantial impacts to public health, safety, or welfare would be reasonably likely to occur due to the proposed event's operational details such as location size or number of attendees, frequency of events, or hours of conduct." I have listed, and I'm happy to read all of the conditions because this is something brand new to us, 16 conditions for this. One, controlling documents. The special use permits controlling documents should be the conditions as set forth herein and the materials submitted to the grantor of Buckingham, Virginia by the grantee James and Carl Burmaster as part of this special use permit. Two, parcels identified and covered by the special use permit, which would be Buckingham County Tax Map 158-11 with a total acreage of 104.7 acres. These parcels may be referred to herein as the site of the project and the identified owners are James and Carl Burmaster. Compliance, number three, the use and development of the subject property should conform to the stated conditions listed herein and conform to all requirements of Buckingham County zoning subdivision and site plan ordinances. And all associated state and federal requirements shall be complied with. Though you to conform or to comply with stated conditions herein could result in revocation of the SUP and therefore the ability to legally operate said activities from the subject site. Any failure on the part of the county in compliance with the development process shall not constitute a violation of the SUP or result of revocation of this. Four, uses and activities covered. The outdoor event venue use would be added and codified by the zoning ordinance under agricultural A1 agricultural section with special permit uses. Further, event venue uses are subject to additional zoning ordinance provisions. Five, the development process. The project will be developed in multiple phases. Each phase shall require a site plan application. If necessary, the site plan application will be submitted to county staff for review, approval, denial, or recommend modifications. If the site plan is approved subsequently, the applicant will be required to submit ENS and stormwater management plans, and this would be for further development of the site. Number six, site layout, orientation, and buildings. The project's overall layout and site orientation shall substantially conform to our master plan submitted, or to his master plan submitted as part of the special use permit application. Number seven, the total area of site to be developed. A total of 70% of the site shall be undeveloped and therefore remain an open space. Areas such as trails and agriculturally exempted buildings will not be considered developed areas. Number eight, development in identified floodplain areas unless a dock or pier, there should be no development in or land disturbances in areas identified in the 100-year floodplain. The development of a dock or pier will be required to conform to all building codes. And the total number of docks and or piers should not exceed two. Number nine, adherence to the Virginia Department of Transportation recommendations. County staff shall forward the site plan submitted to VDOT's Farmville Residency for review and recommendation by the resident engineer or by his or her designated VDOT recommendations for improvement. To the sites existing entrance on Mount Rush Highway, Route 24, shall be adhered to by the applicant. It is anticipated a left and right turning lane will be recommended at the site's entrance. The construction of turn lanes will be required once traffic volumes are determined to warrant such improvements. Other improvements or studies may also be required by VDOT. The cost for all VDOT recommended improvements shall be the sole responsibility of James and Carl Burmaster or society. Ten, all septic and sewer and portable water well system required, Virginia Department of Health approval. Eleven, outdoor lighting. All site lighting of over 3,000 lumens shall be full cutoff fixtures and the maximum height of any light pole should be 30 feet. Full cutoff lighting as defined by the ESNA is a lighted fixture that projects all of its light in the downward direction emitting no upper component of light while providing precise controlled illumination to the area. A lighting plan in photometric format will be provided with each site plan submitted to give review by the zoning administrator. Twelve, total site overnight occupancy. We've established in our definition that there would be no continuation of the outdoor events. This would include if there were any occupancy to stay overnight for the one-night event. So you may want to think about all of these conditions and the layout thereof. The total number of overnight occupancy should not exceed 230 total guests or a number of cumulative guests allowed per the established occupancy of each lodging unit. Each lodging unit, including glamping sites, will be assigned a maximum occupancy by the building official. Thirteen, type and frequency of events. Events will be categorized by three distinct types. The events are as follows. A, private events. Private events shall mean there is no outside or public promotion advertising. As the name suggests, attendees should be on site for a common purpose and/or celebration. Examples of private events are weddings, reunions, corporate retreats, trade group meetings, common interest, hobby groups, or other standalone groups. There will be no restrictions on the size and number of attendees to such events, but it is understood building occupancy will be a limiting factor, and the total occupancy of structures will be limited per the Virginia Uniform Building Code. Remember, there's no restrictions under this except for the condition that we set for the definition, 500 to 5,000. So we'd have to be very specific with the conditions if they were moved forward. B, the second type of event would be a major public event. It means an event in which outside promotion advertising is significant. Such events will be promoted regionally and attendance is expected to exceed 500 but less than 5,000. Such events shall be limited to six in any given calendar year, and any additional events over six shall require approval by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. Fourteen, noise. All outdoor electronic amplification of sound shall cease at 11:00 p.m. from Thursday through Saturday. From Sunday through Wednesday, outdoor electronic amplification of sound shall cease at 10. An exception shall be made for state or national holidays falling on Sunday through Wednesday. In this case, electronic amplification of sound may cease at 11:00 p.m. Annually, three major public events may electronically amplify sound until 12:00 a.m. That's midnight, that's over the noise ordinance, which is 11:00 p.m. And these events shall adhere to all provisions and requirements of Buckingham County's noise ordinance. Fifteen, transferability of a special use permit. This special use permit is indefinite and shall be fully transferable and assignable. The transferee or assignee should be required to follow all conditions and requirements listed and articulated in this document. A transferee or assignee desiring changes, alterations deemed significant to the conditions stated in this document or subsequently approved site plan should require a formal public hearing as articulated in the code of Virginia. Number sixteen, recording. This document shall be recorded by James and Carl Burmaster and the land records of the clerk's office of Buckingham County. Those are just suggestions of conditions as you consider this zoning text amendment, which is something new, Buckingham County zoning ordinance. With all that being said, what are the wishes of the planning commission? Hearing, public hearing on September 7th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Would that be favorable?
First, Mr. Chairman, before we get started. Yeah, my comments, terms of eyes may due to my business relationship with the applicant to management that I need to abstain to avoid any conflict of interest with this application. So I probably won't be participating. I just want that to go on the record.
Thank you.
I do want to add that our applicant and landowner are there here in the audience tonight and ready to participate. Do you have questions?
Danny, did you have a question?
Yes, I'm looking at the plots. On the paperwork I got is on page 175. But it's showing a plot of... It's supposed to be for Susan Hudgens land, and it's really going all the way over into David and Lynn Perkins' land. So to me, the way it's drawn up, the plot is not right. And when I went back and looked on the GSI...
Danny, would you hold up just a minute while they find this document that you're referring to?
When I looked at the... That's plot that they want to work on, it's 110 acres instead of 104. Go to the GSI.
And Carl Burment, would you like to come forward to address some of the questions? Please, sir. Or maybe James.
Thank you.
There was...
Back up, back up, back up, back up. There you go.
And you'd really have to go right and get to the GSI, I might have to look and see it, but see where the... See where the land's going both sides of the road right there? That's where the end of David Perkins' land is, on this side of the road. So the plot is drawn up wrong right there. If you could get up...
I can get on the GSI, ma'am. He and McMahon. Did you have a...
Um, yes. The plot you gave is here. You also included your sales contract.
Yes.
Susan Hudgens. The GIS is... Little disclaimer that says that's not always 100% correct. Mr. Burmaster has included, it's very small.
Yeah, we have some people. Yeah, I know, exactly.
The way that map showed, she got this map on the outside of the road.
This right here, this is still Susan Hudgens. Yeah, see, what David did was, they bought that little piece right here, they must not record it, they're just recording on my own planet. I had a survey, a survey company out there, Farmville. And you see the place, they bought 48 acres off of Susan's to the west.
Right.
And I kept the 104.9. This piece right here, Susan's to us.
Right, right. I was going to say the purple right there?
Yes.
That's David. And according to the plot, if you pull that plot back...
There's the new plot. And they just might not have put it into the county yet. That's the survey after I bought the property.
I'm just talking with the red one, I know what that... It doesn't match this.
The GIS is not...
This is David's. And see, my land's here, and my driveway's probably here. Where it goes across to that land sign is over here.
I want the red marked on it, which is... Wrong, I just want to make sure. There's that. See, I didn't show you.
Yeah, I see that.
The purple one is David Perkins' land, but if you look at the red one, it shows going all the way to him Perkins' land. I just want to make sure we don't...
See that hedge road to the left? You can see the road across the road, see that white flash without rubbing heads? You can see the road across the road, see that white flash without rubbing heads? Piercing spot from that white spot diagonally to the left into that patch of. And then Chad, Chad just built the house on the left side of the seed, he just put one there.
Right, right.
So everything east of that is what I saw, all the way up across the road, David's, as you can see all the two.
And the county now have got it saying it's a hundred and ten acres instead of a hundred and four.
Well, it should be one of four, one of three point eight, but Susan's got that across the road, which probably hadn't looked together, that's my.
That's what she, that's what she, yeah. I just want to get that part straight, make sure that there's no confusion on where the land mark is.
Do you understand all the conditions that have been placed upon you?
Yes, sir.
Are you in agreement with all of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
About the traffic, application for traffic impact determination. Okay, when is that done?
So he has the ability to include that, that will become a condition if he doesn't have it turned in by the, especially by the public hearing. Should you set one right now? He has not submitted that.
I already talked to him, he should have that copy.
It says no, the application says no, um.
Yes, he should have a copy. I wanted to be there, he filled out the form when we came out, looked at the site. It's such a long straightaway there, and he said, see no problem. Instead, I had to put any turn lanes in, I could do it in gravel, but he didn't see a, a problem because it's such a straight road right there. So I did, I did take it to him and he, there we go.
I just had a hot concern because it's a high traffic area.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we're looking at events that may go up to even fifty extra cars out there.
Yes, ma'am, I have a huge front field in front, and if I have to put in a gravel turning lane, I have like, well, if you can see, I probably got three hundred yards of roadrunner or more. Three football fields, so it's, it's all straightaway, all the way down.
Oh, I was there yesterday too.
Oh, you was?
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if I had to put in a turning lane, you know, to, to make it safer, I would like to do it.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. Uh, Carl, could you elaborate a little bit? I know you're not expecting a large venue, but you might want to talk about that a little bit, what, what you have in mind to me.
My first, my first example is a wedding venue, venue, you know, for ads and stuff like that, you know, for Buckingham County. Eventually, you know, some type of music, different types of music, you know, gospel, southern rock, whatever, for the county. Also, I want to make it available to nonprofits, to first responders, you know, even school proms, stuff like that, it's a safe place for people to go. You know, where they, they can be chaperoned and they can, you know, I've talked to the sheriff's department about, about being there during all these events and I've got all that straightened out with them. So I'm pretty much covering my bases. I talked to, you know, Kelly Snidey and, and her engineer came out to the lake and I showed her where I was going to put everything. So, you know, David's going to work with it, you know, make sure I wasn't going to do anything that was going to affect the, the beauty of the land, because it's very, very beautiful. You know, it's a big lake back there. And, and the way I, if you see. Can you pull that one I sent you? I mean, the land is pretty dilapidated when I bought it, house was falling there, I'm, I'm almost halfway through with it. Two white turkey barns are very, very bad, they're going to be taken down, okay? I'm going to try to make everything very pretty. The, the red block was all the way in the back, which you can't see even from the road. That is where I want to put the, for the, and it's, it's on top of the hill, it's not in the spillway. So they can see the lake where it is, but it's, it's not affecting the lake. So we're all good there. The red blocks is actually existing cemetery, it has a whole cemetery there, it has a lot of the flood family there and some other families from the early eighteen hundreds. I'm going to re-do all that and make it nice and pretty. There's another graveyard down on the top of the hill by the, by the water that I'm going to redo. So basically, my, my mission is I want to, I want to make the place beautiful, I want to keep it nature. Because a lot of people, they don't get a chance to come out and see nature, even in the city, they want to be married or whatever, they don't, they want to come out and see something different. Not, not fancy or nothing like that, want to be laid back or whatever it may be. Yeah, in the future, do I want to do some, some larger music events? Yeah, I'd love to. You know, I'm a musician, I play in a band, you know, man, and I know people love that stuff. And being outdoors with all this COVID and everything, there's plenty of room, social distancing is fine, you can, you know, implement all of that. So it's, it's a perfect opportunity, not just for me, but you're bringing people into the county, it's going to help the county as far as people buying stuff and doing stuff. And I'm going to offer it up to nonprofits, to, you know, youth groups and stuff like that, when it's not being used, so they can, you know, they can use it in a nice, safe environment. And that means, that was Susan's, Susan really wanted to do that, and I worked for Susan for twelve years doing her cows and doing her farm before I bought it. And she always talked about wanting to get youth groups down there and give them a place to go and do things. So it's part of her vision too.
Anybody else got any questions?
I do, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I think the county is sorely in need of an event menu, and a lot of our people for weddings have to go through Cumberland or outside counties, and I think it would be a great opportunity. Uh, but Nikki, she said this is new for us in terms of our zoning. So for a zoning text amendment, you know, I think there's a big difference between five hundred people at a nice wedding and four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Now that makes a festival. We think about the number of people that were at the traffic pool and making sure that we get this zoning text amendment right. So I would like to do a little more research on what other counties have in terms of language for zoning text amendments and conditions for events, at least up to that size. That's a pretty big range, so that would be my recommendation, is to take a little time to research. Nikki did her job putting that list, but.
I see what I was just saying, you know, it's in the back of your mind, Woodstock, you know.
Oh, Woodstock, no, Woodstock. But yeah, if the number had to come down, hey, you know, it, it could come down. The, the place is big enough to get that many people there, but it would have, we're talking way down the river, so you'd have to have a pretty popular, large band, you know.
Right, well, Kenny chose Nicky Nelson, you know, and that was.
If I could get Kenny, I'd do my thing.
Right, no, you know, you know, any, any small band.
I hope I can open for him if he comes up there anyway, so, but, but no, I, I can understand that, you know, and, um, I want to do whatever we got to do to get this pushed forward.
Right, because it is in a great spot, it's in a good straight stretch there. And in terms of maybe even narrowing down, I know we have a lot of zoning for population and convenience stores and how many parking spots you need per patron. I think we should try and get that right also for the field as well.
Anytime you want to come out and I'll try and jump you to the lake and show you everything, and, uh, just, just bear with me because it's in building stage right now, it's a little crazy out there. I didn't, I didn't recognize you, Mister Baker. I told her I recognized you, but I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, we saw you in the yard yesterday working as it came down.
As you, but the thirty days between now and public hearing, if one is set, uh, give you enough time to do whatever check you want to do?
Certainly.
Okay. Anybody have any motions?
Where are you? I'm just moving on which, you say it, or just over to?
Uh, if we still have the opportunity after the public hearing to make some changes before we move it along to the board of supervisors, I would move to move toward the public hearing.
Second, ma'am. We have a first, a motion and a second. All in favor of moving it on to public hearing, raise your right hand. Uh, that'll be three, four, five, six, one abstention.
Approved. Yes, sir, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
See y'all next month.
Danny, do you want to?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, due to the fact that we've got three applications for solar farms and a large, actually a massive amount of material. I'd like to make a motion that tonight we take no actions on any of the solar applications. Uh, that we schedule a work session next Monday, August the thirtieth, and a second work session if we feel is needed. Uh, this allows to properly vet the material and make sure that we're answered all of our questions. I would like it to be understood that if we feel comfortable that we can take an action that might be appropriate after the work sessions. However, I, I do want the applicants to understand that I would, would encourage you to go ahead and make your presentations. Uh, that would start the process, that would make the public aware and get a little better understanding of what you're trying to accomplish with the solar farms. So I'm not trying to discourage you from going ahead and making a presentation. We just, uh, in my opinion, I personally need to have a little bit more time because it was, it's just a lot of material to try to cover in such a short time period. So that is my motion.
Do we have a motion, do I have a second? Sorry. Then first and second, then all in favor, raise your right hand. Six of six, unanimous. I'd like to make one other statement before we get going here. The only thing that all of the applicants have, uh, right now are the conditions that have been imposed on previous solar farms in Buckingham, which there have not been many of. And some of it were just not going to be able to accept. I mean, we made mistakes on that first one, there's no doubt. And buffering is one of the biggies. So my advice to you is going to be, between now and when we actually meet for the, uh, hearing of the cases, let's call it. Look at your buffers and see if you can live with something like a fifty-foot buffer all the way around the project. And you're fencing on the inside of the buffer. Because I think that's probably the avenue we're going to be trying to achieve here. And with that, go ahead and call your first applicant.
The next introduction is case twenty-one S U P two eighty-five, landowner Larry and Deborah Davis at two twelve Avalon Farm Lane in Dillwyn. The applicant is Evan Carlson with Impact Power Solutions, twenty-six seventy Patton Road in Roseville, Minnesota. The property information is tax map one fourteen parcel two, it contains approximately thirty-six point four two acres. It's located on Gravel Hill Road, has no nine-one-one address, it's on state map six seventeen. Zoning district is A1 agricultural. Their request is to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar energy generating facility for up to two megawatt. Um, a photo of Old Hayek Community Solar Garden. As we know, the zoning ordinance does not permit a public utility generating plant as a permitted use. However, within the A1 ag district, public utility generating plants, public utility booster relay stations, transfer substations meters and other facilities, including railroads and facilities and water and sewage. May be permitted by the Buckingham County Board Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission and the Code of Virginia. Um, as our chairman mentioned, there are twenty-seven, um, conditions that are suggested in this introduction tonight. I do have joining us by Zoom Evan Carlson and Scott, Scott Aronson with Impact Power Solutions to address any questions or concerns that you may have tonight in regard to this first project that was submitted by Impact Power Solutions.
I want to plug.
Uh, just kind of time for me to start here?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, Jim, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I, thanks. Okay, great. Well, I'm Evan Carlson, I'm the director of land and legal for I P S. Uh, I work with Scott Aronson, he is doing some site acquisition work for us. Uh, he acquired these two sites. We are, uh, one of the older developers around, we've been around since nineteen ninety-one. Um, in that time, we have done a lot of commercial rooftop. And, uh, when Minnesota, the state we're from, adopted a similar program to allow for community solar, we were one of the early entries into the market. And because of that, we have a lot of experience building this particular type of, of solar project. I understand that you've had projects before, I, I can explain how they're affixed to the ground and, and, and just kind of what the mechanics look like. But really, that part of it is probably not too different from what you've already seen. Uh, what's different about this project, uh, from the other ones is that it, it's a community solar garden, the economics of it are different. Uh, community solar is a way for people who don't have a good spot to put solar panels, to participate in solar as if the panels were up on their roof. So say, uh, you're a business, you, uh, you rent an industrial space, you use a lot of power, you want to do solar, but you don't own the roof, you don't own the building. And, or, or say you, you live in an apartment and you don't own the building, and you want to do solar, how do you do it? These people, uh, they went to the state, they're lobbying for a program to be created, and this is what they came up with. So we, as a developer, lease land from a private party somewhere, we pay to build the, uh, solar, uh, installation. And when we put power into the grid, we get a bill credit for that power, which is in essence a, a coupon, uh, that we sell to another, uh, customer of the same utility. That that customer buys that coupon and uses it to offset the, uh, the price of their power bill. So say we put, you know, a lot of power into the grid, we get a, a bill credit that's just good for one watt with Dominion. We sell that bill credit to another, uh, Dominion customer and they, they, they use it to reduce their, their, uh, fiscal liability under their, uh, power bill. So unlike a power plant that sells power directly to the utility, we really are a community of people who likely will be local to the area, uh, that will stand to benefit from, uh, this development. So that, that's why I call it community solar garden, some people don't like calling them gardens, they say, oh, it's a solar power plant, but, uh, that, that's the, that's, it's about the economics of it, that's why it's called what it is. So, um, there is a, a direct, uh, economic benefit to conscribers, or to the people who are treated as though the power is on their roof. The catch with the programs is that we're limited in size and how big we can build a project. Uh, they have capped us at five megawatts. Uh, however, these two projects are, uh, two megawatts and, and smaller. And so they're, they're, they're quite a bit smaller, they're about, oh, and fifteen acres or so each. Um, and, uh, so they are, you know, very different in, in that respect, they're, they're just quite a bit smaller. Um, we have tried to site these in areas that, well, first, when we're citing, we look at where can you build it, you know? What, where are you on the right side of a power line that runs to a substation that has capacity? And, uh, in an area that, that allows for it, that will be out of sight for the most part. And we've done our best to site these in areas that won't be visible to surrounding neighbors. And, um, our, our hope is that when they're complete, will be entirely out of sight. Um, I, I visited both of these sites and I, I watched them. And I, I do think that, uh, they, they should be totally, um, out of sight once, once complete. Uh, this particular project does require some screening along Gravel Hill Road, um, but, uh, once that's built in, then it, then it should be out of sight. The entire system is, is designed to be removable, it's not a permanent structure. We don't, uh, pour concrete to affix the solar panels to the ground, we hammer in an I beam. And then the, the panel is affixed to the I beam, and then when the system is decommissioned after it's used to life, we remove the I beam and the, the panel goes out with it. Uh, there is one concrete equipment pad, it's about three hundred square feet. Um, but the point is there aren't like a bunch of, uh, concrete plings, uh, holding in the solar panels all over the field. That part could be restored to ag production after the use of life of the project. Um, throughout the life of the project, we, uh, plant an indigenous pollinator friendly seed mix underneath the solar panels. Uh, the seed mix has the, uh, well, it's brittle, it's local, it's going to be something that grows, you know, in, in the area. But the point is you got to put something down there, otherwise you're going to get weeds, right? So we pick a feed mix that will provide pollinator habitat to insects as well as, um, you know, the predatory animal birds that eat them. Um, that seed mix has the effect of improving the permeability, permeability of the soil and slowing down the water runoff. Whereas the crop lands, you know, you've got roads and, and row crops, this is all grass, kind of like, uh, crap mix if you're familiar with the C R P program that the state has. It's a natural, uh, base that should create wildlife habitat and have a really big improvement on the quality of any, uh, wetlands in the area, any water in the area. It's basically a big filter for, um, uh, any, any runoff, um, similar to like, uh, filter for any runoff, similar to like the buffers that you see around water bodies. I submitted a lot of materials. I understand that solar is relatively new to the state, so there are unanswered questions, and I did my best to get ahead of that by submitting a lot of material. And I hope I didn't overwhelm you, I understand you have a need to study this, doing a workshop, not a bad idea. Just know that, you know, I didn't, I'm trying to be as helpful as I can to supply as much information as I can. In that information packet, I included information about the Virginia Department, let me pull it up here. The state has provided some guidelines on what that seeding needs to look like, and I included those scorecards and supplemental materials showing what that, how the state has guided this in my packet. So first, you know, I got my normal narrative that just kind of describes the project. Then I did this little additional Q and A section. The Q and A section, I had some information about the potential for a solar array to reduce values of surrounding properties, or the unlikelihood that it will reduce values of surrounding properties, particularly in this case, it's not visible. And then other information about the benefits of a deep-rooted seed mix, and just how that squares up with a, you know, as opposed to farming it. And then all these criteria, the state has done a really good job of providing this information. They've got the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they have this comprehensive manual, and it's a huge document, but it provides guidelines on seeding. They've got a vegetation monitoring plan, and that's how you can tell that the vegetation that was planted isn't just planted, at first, but how it's doing throughout the life.
We really don't need to get into all that quite often tonight. You know, I don't want to cut you off, but that's not meant for tonight.
Sure, I mean, I'm going to tell you as much or as little as you want, we got a workshop to do it.
Let me ask you a question. If you ever applied for solar projects in Virginia before?
Yes.
How many did you apply for with Dominion Power?
With Dominion, probably 80?
How many of those were approved?
Are you talking about permitting, like going to planning commission, or are you talking about your connection?
I'm talking about solar projects that you all had done, or proposing to do.
So in order to be eligible for this program, and this program has not opened up yet, it opens up in October, this new program for community solar gardens, okay? And in order to be eligible for the program, you need to submit an application to the utility. The utility will study your application if you're the first in queue on that feeder line and on that substation. So there can't be anybody else ahead of you on the line trying to get a project on, they won't even study it if there's somebody else ahead of the line. We submitted roughly 100 or so applications into Dominion, and of those, a much smaller fraction were capable of being studied. The ones that were capable of being studied, we learned whether or not it makes fiscal sense to interconnect at that point in the electric utilities grid, we know whether or not, you know, there's room to handle a project. Those projects that are first in queue and have room for the power go to planning commission. And that's where this project is. This is among the cream of the crop, very few that made it this far along. We started with roughly 100, and we're down to maybe, hopefully, this would be done relatively soon for this program, I mean, there may be like, maybe six or so projects that we're hoping to have done by October, when this flagship new program opens up. So you have to have your permits in place, if it's a county or whoever's in charge, and your interconnection agreement in order to be eligible to apply to this program. And then it's basically first come, first served, and that starts in October. So, I'm sorry, that's a lot of information, but I hope that answers your question. They're all new, the program hasn't opened yet, it opens in October, and we're doing many, many projects, but they're all very small.
Okay, talk to him. Does anybody else got any questions to this gentleman?
Yeah, where'd you get your plot from, for this, for the land? Your plot information? Your plot information on its land that you got?
We got the plot information from G I S sources. We have some private company G I S sources, and I believe we also use the R C I S that provided by the county.
Well, I can tell you right now that your plot is wrong. That Mr. Davis's land does not touch the Dragovic's land. Barbara Carnaby owns the land up. Right where you got your road and all will be on Barbara Carnaby's land. So you need to go back and get this land thing straightened out. Now, he owns the land beside it too, he probably just slid it over, a couple hundred feet, but you need to get all that straightened out.
Yeah, that's helpful for me, I, you know, we just rely on the maps that we're provided. You're saying that there's a, is there another parcel in between the?
Yes.
The home to the left?
Yes. Barbara Carnaby's on 11360. I know it shows it over to the side, but she also got the land going in between the two plots that you're looking at. They're in between 11368 and the 114-2. See, on your plot, you got a 114-4. That's not even right, that goes down the road another half mile.
We'll have a discussion with the landowner, and we'll, usually before we submit, we show the landowner the site plan, but we'll have another discussion, we'll look at it again with the county now, and maybe that's a discussion that we should have with the county and what makes sure that the site is appropriate.
Are we, where are you seeing the tax I D number? I don't have it labeled on this.
Yeah, that's right. Well, that's all, let me tell you, I've got 1800 pages, so I'm on page 436 of my Part 1.
Evan, this would be part of the site plan you submitted, showing the installation of the panels, it has a?
Yeah, it shows the panel.
An aerial view. Looks like a site plan typically, or?
And where is the?
Marstals of the?
Okay, that's the, now, 114-4 is how it's labeled.
Yeah, and it's really far for today. 114-2 is what it really is.
Well, we're going to have to clean it up. We'll get right on top of it, and we'll have it hopefully by the workshop.
Yeah, because she's got a strip of land down in between the two, so that's her door land.
All right, well, definitely get it fixed up.
Thank you for making that, for giving us notice of that, we can take it away.
Yeah, the land right beside it, to the right, if you don't talk about it, that's still Mr. Davis's land too, so you, like you said, he probably could slide it over and get it fixed, but anyway. It won't fit where you got it.
Does anybody else have any questions for me?
Any other commissioners have questions?
I don't have any, just.
No, sir, I think that pretty much concludes what we can do with you tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We do have another project as well, I don't know if you're going to call that.
Let's get, let's get that one together.
Yeah.
The next introduction involves Impact Power Solutions as well, this is case 21 S U P 286. The landowner in this case is N C N Properties LLC, that would be Lawrence Marshall at 3222 Garland Lane Charlottesville. The applicant, once again, is Evan Carlson, Impact Power Solutions. This tax map is 125 parcel four, lot three, it contains approximately 75.29 acres, it's located on South Constitution Route, which is State Route 20, it's zone A1. Their request is the same, to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar energy generating facility for up to 2 megawatts AC photovoltaic community solar garden. So their intent in this application, in this case number, is the same in the case prior with the 2-megawatt solar facility. Their request, of course, is to obtain that special use permit, and do you have any other questions in regard to this case, for Evan or Scott?
Yes, we have a plot problem there too. I saw it. Just what I said, you got, right there, it's same, I know on the first part of it, which you just read, 125 parcel four, lot three, and that's a parcel in the back, which is owned by the same people though, but that's a 75-acre plot back there. The other plot, which I think is what y'all were looking at, is one in front of it, which is 125 four dash two, and I think you've got that written down somewhere else too.
That's probably the title I'm thinking, because we do have that written down on that site plan, I'm looking at it.
Is there any way y'all could get that up in front of us, so we can see what's going on here?
Yes, sir, we're trying.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I'm thinking that's just the title there, and that we have the correct T I D on the actual site plan that I'm looking at right now.
Let's see, ramp is on.
Must be on list page 800 by now.
Do you have the old broken up into one, two, three?
I'm right here, I just need to see if we have.
We're so sorry for sending you up with this nation, it's really a crap, sometimes we don't, and then they ask for a whole bunch more information, and other times, other times we do, and you know, and it's like, holy cow, 800 pages, and trying to go through everything can be quite burdensome, so.
Scott, it's actually?
And also, we'd like to be there in person so we can see it too, you know, and hopefully in the future, to various public care, we can come down there, we can kind of put a name to the face and see who we are and all that type of stuff.
Yeah, it's on Part 2, page 25 for me, so I don't know where y'all got it, put it there. But it is on the front plot, which is the 25 four two. On paperwork, it is four three, so we need to clean up a paperwork file.
I had Nancy put them up right there a second ago.
I talked to the landowner about this, and all trees, they have been cropped before, not old growth.
That's the site, isn't it now a lot, it's not a lot there, no one can see it.
It's like we got similar ownership on several of the adjoining parcels.
Yeah, the N C N, they own both properties, so. Good, it's just, it didn't have any numbers right yet.
So you've got the tax map numbers?
Mixed up, yeah.
Inverted, they need to just flip.
The 25 four dash three is what's on the first paperwork, and it's actually 125 four two. What they've got marked up is a four two. Yeah. It's just on that paperwork, when I started looking, it was written up as four three, so that's what I had to look up. So it, I don't know if I can go back to the, let's see, page 15. Page 15, it says again, parcel 125 four dash three. That's part of the permit.
Johnny, you can look at that and tell, is that cut over?
All that's been cut and reinforced.
How old is the trees between the school and the project? How old are those trees?
Between the school and the project, all the plantation was done at one time, I'd say it's maybe, remember we started with a 10-year-old plantation?
So that it would not be present?
No.
Okay.
They're all enough now, I don't think you would see it with this. And then there's timber between, what was it, Stride Street Building? They have timber on, which you can see on the backside of their property, which would shield it all for.
Yeah, right there. I get kind of much more. It'd be nice if all that number's right, I don't know.
Is that an issue, maybe to change the tax map numbers, something to get reversed, without too much trouble?
They can just submit a statement or limit to that application.
You can, like, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, we can go ahead and do that, and we'll go ahead and submit the documents. Do you need a sign and authorize, a sign to do?
No, we'll talk with Nikki about this, because I think we did submit a pre-revised version, and I noticed that the T I D numbers were accurate, and I corrected them. So I think we're probably looking at, either I didn't get the correct version over to you, or I'm not quite sure. But we got, we got to get a look at it, we'll get in contact.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, we'll make sure so.
Whatever you tell us, we will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, y'all will let us do our thing, and we'll talk to you again on the...
Not all you have, then?
Yeah, three men, yeah. I hear kind of much more. It'd be nice if all that number was right, no one would remember.
Is that an issue, maybe to change the tax map numbers, something to get reversed, without too much trouble?
They can just submit a statement for amendment to that application.
You can make it aware that.
Yep, we can go ahead and do that, and we'll go ahead and submit the document. Do you need a sign and authorize, the sign to do?
No, we'll talk with Nikki about this, because I think we did submit a pre-revised version, and I noticed that the TID numbers were accurate, and I corrected them. So I think we're probably looking at, either I didn't get the correct version over to you, or I'm not quite sure. But we gotta get a look at it, we'll get in contact.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, we'll make sure, so.
Whatever you tell us, we will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, y'all will let us do our thing, and we'll talk to you again on the, what is it, the, what's the date of the next one? Twenty-seventh of September, is it?
September twenty-seventh would be the next one, if you need to me.
Okay. So we will talk to y'all definitely on the twenty-seventh of September.
And that will be another workshop, correct?
I hope we're that far along. I mean, you just saw the two of them trying to get us to the page we tried, that we finally got pulled up. I mean, it took them that long on a computer to find it. We're supposed to digest all this material, I think you want us to, don't you?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we want to be partners with, we want to be partners with you guys, we want to make sure you understand everything that. And we're part of an abundance of caution, we submitted a ton of information.
Yes, you did. I get the feeling, when you submit that much information, you're trying to hide something from it. That makes me want to read every line of it, twice.
Absolutely, I really hope you do, because I think you're, I think you.
Look, here's the truth of the matter, is that you never know what you're gonna get. And sometimes people are opposed to these things for reasons that they don't truly understand, so.
I really wasn't impressed with the John Deere combine specifications in owner's manual. I think that could have been left there, but neither here nor there, we'll see y'all on the twenty-seventh, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and if you want, yeah, let us know too where the public hearing is, so we can make sure we can come down and see you guys in person, too, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys very much, you guys have one.
Well.
If you'd like us to help out with, or explain anything in your workshops, we're happy to attend as well, if you'd like.
Yeah, 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 we're, yeah, I didn't mean to make that, that we're always going to public hearing. Whatever you need it for, in person, or we're willing to do whatever, whatever, thanks for mentioning that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um, David? Do we want to get off of Zoom at this point?
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Now, where were we?
Excellent application.
Yes, uh. This is Riverstone's turn, I guess. We got Rev, but never mind.
The next introduction is case twenty-one S U P two ninety. The landowner is Wirehauser Company, Seattle, Washington. The applicant tonight is Apex Clean Energy Incorporated, Charlottesville, Virginia. There are multiple tax maps for this property information. First one is tax map seventeen parcel eight, it contains approximately five hundred and twenty-one acre. Tax map seventeen nine containing ninety-seven point four acres. Tax map seventeen thirteen containing approximately fifty-nine and a half, and tax map eighteen parcel two containing approximately one thousand two hundred and eighty-six point four acres. These parcels are north of Bridgeport Road, east of Route 20, west of Hardware, and Slate River Magisterial District is agricultural A1. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar photovoltaic module to produce up to one hundred and forty-nine point five megawatt. Power generated will be linked to the electrical transmission grid via the existing one hundred and thirty-eight kilo volt overhead high voltage transmission line adjacent to the property. As mentioned, the landowner is Wirehauser, and the applicant is Apex Clean Energy. As we know, a special use permit is required for a public utility generating plant. The applicant is here, they provided much information, as you, Mr. Chairman, discussed some of the conditions that have been submitted. I believe that they are here and able to address any questions or concerns that you may have, Missina.
Soon they have a presentation they'd like to make.
David, how y'all doing? My name is David Merrick, I'm a development manager with Apex Clean Energy. I also have John Bubeck here with me tonight, he's with Jen Treelock. He's our legal, helping us represent the project. I prepared a few slides, just to run through the project at a high level for you all, and towards the end, we'll have time for questions. Gone through a lot tonight, so I'll try to keep it quick. But as far as the high level agenda, we do, I do want to give you an overview of Apex, who we are, what we do, and then an overview about the project, called Riverstone Solar Project. As Nikki said, it'll be proposed in northern Buckingham County. And now, we'll run through the economic benefits for the community engagement that we've done to date. Walk through the preliminary site design, which can be found in the application as a supplementary attachment. And then, I'll also walk you through just some comparable site photos of some projects that we've done in the past, also an overview. So Apex, we're a clean energy company, we only do renewable energy projects. We formed in two thousand and nine, I've been with Apex originally since two thousand and fourteen, but full-time more recently for the last three and a half, four years as a development manager. So we develop, we like originate projects, we develop them, we manage the construction of them, and then we also have an operations center based out of Charlottesville, Virginia, where we can operate them remotely. We don't just do solar, we do wind farms as well, more recently, we can get battery storage. So we have completed over twenty-four dozen projects across the country, actually. We actually recently got through the first onshore wind farm in Virginia as well. Mainly in Virginia, our work is focused on solar. And this project is currently proposed, it's only solar, as Nikki said, it's one hundred and forty-nine point five megawatts of solar. So it's sort of bordered by the south, and I know a few of you, I think you've actually already been to the project, but Bridgeport Road borders the southern portion of the project, and Paines Pond Rev provides the center of the project. The area that we have under lease is about two thousand acres. It is a large project, but with that comes substantial investment in the county. It's approximately a hundred and ninety million dollar investment for this project, this is a scale energy project, and so it will be providing quite a bit of power onto the grid of the Commonwealth. And to sort of put that in the perspective, that's enough to power about thirty thousand homes annually, so that's every year, we power thirty thousand homes, which I believe that's more than the number of homes in Buckingham County. So if this project were built, Buckingham would be an exporter of renewable energy in the Commonwealth. You can go back to the previous slide, thank you. And kind of with that comes a lot with the signs, right? And so during construction, there's going to be a one-time pulse, sort of activity from all the folks that are going to be necessary to, for all the site work, and installation of panels, and the racking, the construction of the substation, the interconnection into the grid. We anticipate four hundred and fifty to five hundred, full-time equivalent jobs during that one-year period of construction. So there'd be a huge influx of jobs in the county, and I understand the construction sector is one of Buckingham's largest sectors, and so you are sort of poised to offer expertise there, and there are also a lot of training programs. You know, one in particular that we sponsor, to help train folks on how to install and work on these projects. And during the life of the project, we estimate it would be a forty-year anticipated lifespan. And there's a couple of things that have sort of happened recently legislatively, that has really moved the needle for what counties like Buckingham can receive as far as tax benefits for these projects. If we were talking a couple of years ago, sort of nineteen days, as far as the revenues that the county would see, but now today, under this new legislation, there's going to be, what's called, we assume that Buckingham will pass, what's called revenue share ordinance. In all honesty, it's the most favorable ordinance for the county. If you decide to go a different route, or if you don't, it would be a windfall for us, but if you do go the revenue share ordinance, which is what we're assuming you would go, the county would receive about fourteen hundred dollars a megawatt every year for the life of the operation of the project, and then that'll actually escalate by ten percent every, every five years. And so.
Could I interrupt just one second?
Yes, sir.
Who is the ultimate owner of this project? Is it Dominion Power?
So I can't really say who it is at this time, because it hasn't been purchased yet, but basically.
More than likely?
I wouldn't say that. We've actually never sold a project to Dominion Power. We are an independent power producer, and so we'll develop these projects, we'll help with the construction, we'll sell the power to corporates or industrials, it could be Manhiser Bush, IKEA, Amazon, Facebook, Google, we'll set that up. And then we'll look for a sponsor, somebody that has a hundred and ninety million dollars that they can put down, you know, somebody in the market to own a renewable energy project. And sure, a local utility is poised to want to own a renewable energy project, but there are other folks in the United States that also want to own a renewable energy project.
Reason I'm asking the question, Dominion Power was going to put the power line through, the pipeline through Buckingham. Crafted was all negotiated out, and all they pulled out, obviously, but they were going to store all of the equipment that they were going to put in Buckingham, over in West Virginia, where they got the tax revenue. So we would just practice beyond that one. All these solar panels, where they going to be while they're being installed?
So they'll actually be right on site, so on our site.
So they're going to be stored on-site?
That's correct.
Which makes them subject to personal property or taxing Buckingham County, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, it will be taxed.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt your.
Sure, no problem.
But that was.
And one thing I'll note is, to your point, yeah, Dominion does buy a lot of solar projects, but we haven't, we haven't done a project with Dominion yet, we have to sign a PPA with them for smaller projects.
We'll pull that on you in a minute, I can tell you that about them.
Well, our, the line that we're planning to interconnect into the one thirty-eight overhead transmission line, that's owned by Appalachian Power, A E P. You'll hear me say A E P, it's also, it also can be called American Electric Power. So it's not on Dominion Infrastructure. Sometimes Dominion has a tendency to prefer projects that are other infrastructure, but, you know, they are a potential buyer of the project. So I just, that is a reality. So to dive in back in, and I'll try to get through this, and it's going to be late, but about the revenues of the project, I was going into the revenue share structure that 's recent installation that was passed. Basically, in summary, Buckingham County will receive what we estimate is about fourteen point eight million dollars in direct tax revenues over the life of the project. So this is a combination between the revenue share structure, and then also, to your point, that the increased property taxes that are going to result from basically the infrastructure being located on the property. And so what's currently valued, maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars an acre, will go up to about ten thousand to twelve thousand dollars an acre with the solar panel infrastructure now located on it. And so, just like if you built a house, right, the taxes are going to go up for that. And so sort of Buckingham County will see a windfall from both of those. Real estate taxes will go up, and then you'll also get the revenue share structure from the power that we're generating, so you'll get capacity payments as a result of that. So it's pretty impactful numbers, actually.
Now, there's ten percent increase at the end of five years. That's not a two percent a year annual increase, is it?
It's a, it's, no, you're right, it's a ten percent, ten percent every five years.
What happens in year four?
But that's tied, that's tied to when the legislation was passed, which it was just passed July first, twenty twenty-one. And so in July first, twenty twenty-six, regardless of whenever this project becomes operational, that ten percent escalation is going to be triggered. And so from years, let's just say theoretically that the project is operational.
You're playing in rear, in other words.
Well, let's just say it's, the project's operational in twenty twenty-three. So in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, so once through four years, from that capacity payment, we'll pay two hundred and nine thousand dollars each one of those years in revenues, just in the capacity payment. Now, in year five, and that just lines up with when the legislation was passed, but in year five, that'll escalate ten percent. So ten percent, two hundred and nine thousand, I think it jumps up to.
Forty thousand now.
Yeah, so, and that, and that will, so then that stays like that for another five years, then another jump, then another jump, then another jump, and then by the time it gets to year four, you're about, I want to say it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, maybe a little bit more than that, actually. And so substantial tax revenues for the county. Actually, just in year one, if the project that's proposed would be constructed and become operational, we would be the number one taxpayer in Buckingham by a long shot. We'd be three or four times larger than the current hottest taxpayer in Buckingham.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No problem. So the only last thing that I haven't hit on this slide is, sort of with this project, it comes with a lot of environmental benefits, too, and I don't mean to get philosophical, and some folks can have their views on climate change or not, but this is clean energy, it doesn't require fuel to operate, there's variable moving parts, and it's a lot of power to be putting on the grid. And so that's, that's a lot of power that won't require conventional fossil fuels to operate. This would actually offset about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand tons of carbon every single year. So that's the amount, to just put that in perspective, I calculated the offset through one of EPA's online tools. So that's the equivalent of three hundred and eight thousand acres of US forest every year, that's how much carbon they sequester in a single year, three hundred and eight thousand acres of US forest. So this is an extremely impactful project as far as reducing our carbon footprint, really as a human race, and also in the community. We can go to the next slide. So this is just a snapshot of the economics that I sort of walked you through. The first column is the current agricultural use, it's all commercial timber property. Wirehauser actually just recently logged most of this property, which made three or four hundred acres that hasn't been logged yet, but most of that is actually ready to be logged. And that wasn't a result of this project, it was just mature timber that was ready to log. And so if you look at the current agricultural use, over the forty-year lifetime, the county would see about three hundred and three thousand in tax benefits. Now, if you compare that to the proposed use, which is the solar project, which would actually be on the same rotation as timber, so it's about forty-year life, the county would see about fourteen point eight million in tax revenues from the project. And this really comes with no additional burden on county capital facilities, we don't need water, we don't need sewer, you know, there's no houses, we're not going to have additional kids at schools and things like that. This is really a similar land use, and it's essentially a farm, right, where we'll be harvesting energy from the sun every day. And also, there's going to be that one-time pulse of activity, economic activity from the construction of the project, and I spoke to that earlier. But to just put that in perspective, just in, just in the tax money, just from purchasing stuff, we estimate one point nine million dollars in local and state taxes. And then also, we estimate four hundred and eighty-two jobs, four hundred of that, we feel like can come from Buckingham County, based on their current construction sector numbers, but that would pay about twenty-four million in wages, just in construction jobs during that one-year time of construction. Now, during operations, there's really not many full-time equivalent jobs, much of it is just landscaping and maintenance, we actually anticipate maybe five jobs at most during the operations of the project, like I said, it would be remotely operated from Charlottesville, and so, you know, it would be a huge influx. And so, you know, it would be a huge influx of traffic. Once it's built, it'll be pretty quiet, you'll have one or two pickup trucks maybe coming in and out there a week, and it's just folks mowing the grass.
Well, you're on that, talking about four hundred more acres are getting ready to be cut on this project?
Sure.
You might want to talk to them, but leaving a fifty foot buffer.
Sure, yes.
It'll be much cheaper on y'all on your end, Rick, you just buy that fifty feet of standard timber.
Yes, sir, you're exactly right.
Said enough then. We'll discuss it in a moment.
I'm happy to discuss it, yeah, anytime, really. So I wanted to just quickly walk through some of the community engagement that we've done. Like I said, we're located right in Charlesville. The project's actually just very good southwest, it was an hour drive for us to get here. And not just this project, but all projects that we do, community engagement is huge for us. We really work very hard to try to make sure that these projects are a good fit for these communities. And so I wanted to highlight just what we've done a little bit to date, but certainly is not the end, it's really just the beginning as we initiate this process. But we do have a project website at this riverstonesolar.com. We also have a Facebook page at Riverstone Solar. So within that, it contains my contact information, project information, FAQs, and even a platform for folks to leave comments, they can go around the website and leave comments. We also held a community meeting on June tenth. We sent out postcards to neighboring landowners and we also put an advertisement in the local paper and we held a community meeting. The supervisor that represents our district participated in that meeting and we also had some folks join and answer questions. I gave a presentation, the presentation was recorded and anybody that's reached out to me, I send them a copy of the presentation for the folks that weren't able to join. And folks could have joined by internet or by phone too, if they didn't even have internet. And since filing the application, we actually also recently started sending neighboring landowner letters. So letters that I write basically to the neighboring landowners to just keep them up to date about the project, keep them informed, keep an open channel of communication so they don't know how to contact me and ask questions, and even provide feedback on our design of the project itself. And then I also, the last bullet here is just some organizations that we've contacted to date. Like I said, this is just the beginning. We plan to contact a number of additional organizations and if there's anybody you all recommend, we encourage you to do that. But we've spoken Appalachian Voices, Friends of Buckingham, Yogaville, the Buckingham Volunteer Firefighters Association, which we actually sponsored the tractor pole. We're a member of the Chamber of Commerce and spoken to those folks. And we also coordinated with Buckingham Historical Society, which records Jack to make sure that there weren't a cultural resource that's located on the site. We can go to the next slide. So here is our preliminary site design. This is really the heart of our application. It does show a lot, right? Pictures, a thousand words. So I can't see it as well as you all because you have your screens really close to your face, but I'll do my best to try to illustrate as much as I can. So the light blue area is what we're calling the development envelope. This is sort of the area that is proposed for potential disturbance. That excludes setbacks and buffers and screening. It also excludes the wetlands and the streams that you see that are sort of dividing the center of the project there that sort of work their way through. So we've delineated all of those wetlands with ecologists, they actually mapped them on data GPS, and so we have really good data on the wetlands. We actually also did an altus survey, so we did a full scope altus survey where we surveyed all the entirety of the property and so we know exactly where everything is and, you know, how battery lines might have shifted a little bit here or there based on county GIS versus our own now internal information. But the light blue hatching, that's proposed solar panels. And then you'll see all of those are sort of connected with various colored lines. The colored lines are what we call collection. And so that collection is basically thirty four or five KV cables, about this thick, and it connects all the various arrays to each other. So solar panels are actually very simple in construction, and I'll show you some pictures towards the end of this presentation, but really it's just steel that's driven into the ground, and then we have a racking system that's set on top of that, and then we have the panels that are set on top of the racking system. And they're really just daisy chained together. And then, and then that wire is sort of rung all the way down the array, and then it's all organized very nice and neatly and then into an inverter. So the inverters are about the size of a refrigerator, and those are the pink boxes that you'll see on the site design here. And so those inverters are generally located more internal to the site because of the slight hum to those facilities. And what those do is they convert it from direct current to alternating current. And then you'll see all of those whole colored lines will all run back to the yellow box in the northeast corner. So that's where we're going to be interconnecting into the existing transmission lines. So all of those smaller thirty four or five KV lines will all run back to that first box, and that's what we call a collection station. And so that's where it brings all the power from the power plant, and it steps it up from thirty four or five KV to a hundred and thirty eight KV where the existing lines are. And so it steps the power up and prepares it for transportation on the grid. And then the yellow box, that's going to be owned by AEP, American Electric Power. So that's their transmission lines, and so it's more than likely that we'll build that, but that's going to be an interconnection switching station, also known to many folks as a substation. It's just going to be a substation. And so we'll interconnect into that substation, and then that line will be slacked into the existing overhead transmission lines that are adjacent to the project. And so in reality, the design is quite simple, but, you know, it looks complex because it's a large area and there's some environmental features that have to be avoided. There is Payne's Pond Road, like I said, that divides the middle of it. The red stars are the access points that we're proposing. So there's seven proposed access points. Now, one thing I'll note is there's two access points to the most western side of the project, all the way west. And that's Quail Run Lane and Georgia Creek Road. So those are sort of like, I guess what I would say, dead end neighborhoods, very quiet areas. And in my opinion, those folks probably wouldn't want four hundred and fifty construction folks coming through there every day to build the Riverstone Solar Project. And so in light of that, what we've done is we've actually committed to prohibiting the use of those roads during construction. And then that way, they really wouldn't see much activity at all during construction. And so the primary entrances for the project would be off of Bridgeport Road and then off of Payne's Pond Road. And we would access actually that western pocket of the site by spanning a little Georgia Creek Road with what we're calling, it's a jump bridge basically, but it's just a steel bridge that would just be set right over Georgia Creek Road. And so it'd allow us to take equipment as big as tractor trailers over that without impacting any of the wetlands. So we could access that whole western pocket of the site without even having to go through Georgia Creek Road or Quail Run Lane. And then, once construction is complete and the project's operational, we would propose to use those two roads as O and M access points. Like I said, it's really minimal traffic during operations, about one to two pickup trucks a week just for basically cutting the grass and, and, you know, minor maintenance of stormwater features and things like that.
On this schematic, is that a good word for it?
That's a great word, yeah.
It almost appears, and I, you know, I can't see a scale on here or comprehend how far you actually have those panels off of the roads, for example. Have you got fifty feet?
That's correct, yes.
You do have them off fifty feet anyway?
One hundred percent.
Even down the Main Pond Road?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there's actually a green, I don't know if you can see it or if you can zoom in on those, but there's actually a green area on either side of Payne's Pond Road where we illustrated the proposed screening there. Yes, but that is fifty feet. And to your point about screening, I understand that view shed is important, especially in a rural part of the county, in a county like Buckingham that is, you know, rural, right? I live in a rural area myself, right? And I mentioned this to you, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but generally, you know, folks like things to keep looking the way that they look now. And so.
Second best thing is out of sight, out of mind. So our object, objective is going to be to get them out of sight.
That's correct.
Don't want to see any of them.
That's correct.
No, no, they're all ugly. One of them's uglier than the next one. Can't make the pig pretty.
And in light of that, one thing I'll add is, this is all commercial timberland. And so everything that's been cleared, which has been cleared over the last couple of years, it's already been replanted with pine by a warehouse.
Right, but in all fairness, they're that tall.
Yeah, they are that tall now.
Ten years to get them to where I can't see anything else.
I understand. Well, I also understand.
So if we take fifty feet of that road and we broadcast seed on it, so I make an impenetrable jungle.
Yeah.
That's what I would.
Understood.
Okay.
And to your, to your point about it being fifty feet, not all screening is the same, right? You could have, you could have fifty feet of, you know, one foot trees that are only ever going to get three feet tall, and even if you have fifty feet, it's not going to do the job.
Won't do the job.
And you could also have one foot of a concrete wall that's twenty feet high, right? And so.
It's just as ugly as the soul.
And so in our setbacks throughout the entire project area, will be a fifty foot setback. And so within those setbacks, we are proposing to leave existing vegetation within that. And so instead of peeling it up with a dozer, we're just going to leave it right where it is, and then, and then the fence will be built on the interior of that.
Good, actually.
And so you'll have fifty foot of the warehouse planted pines between us, our fence, and the property line. Our fence may not even be all the way up to fifty feet. There's likely many areas throughout the project where we won't even be as close to fifty feet even, right?
And you've talked about a perimeter fence in this project?
That's correct.
You're not really talking about a perimeter fence of the twenty two hundred eighties?
No.
You're talking a perimeter fence of the individual groups of solar panels?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's absolutely right. And Nikki, if you go to the next slide, actually. So to your point, it's not going to just be one contiguous fence around the entire project area, and I don't know if you folks have seen this, this is an exhibit a little further down our application, but it's titled wildlife.
Wildlife, yeah.
Wildlife corridors. And so we understand there's a big hunting community in Buckingham, I'm a bowhunter myself, and it's important to make sure that wild game, right, can still travel through the project given the size of it.
You made some hellacious pinch boards, I can tell you that.
That's right, and now everyone in the county knows exactly where they are. But you can see where the yellow here, so these are contiguous wildlife corridors where deer, turkey, and really any animals, birds, anything can travel through the, through the project site. And so, you know, there's multiple areas where while the project is big, to your point, it's not going to just be one contiguous fence. You know, we would want to fence something that they don't need to fence, right? We don't want to do that. And so we only want to fence where our infrastructure is going to be located. So this is a good example of a design feature that we made so not only does it help us save money on fencing, but it also has other benefits too, like creating wildlife corridors, where we're able to shift some things to actually open up some channels where animals can continually just.
Move junk with the wetlands.
Walk through the area. That's correct. Well, the wetlands serve a lot of purposes.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you have any other questions about the site plan, but we can go back to that or talk about it again in a future session. But if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to sort of summarize some of the design considerations that we've made from a community perspective to date. So we do have view shed, which we've talked about already today. Leave existing mature vegetation within the setbacks and then along the right of ways, we'll screen along those right of ways where necessary. I'll note that even along the right of ways, for instance, on Bridgeport Road and then also on Payne's Pond Road, even where it's been cleared, there has been pines that have been replanted in those areas, and warehouse is pretty good at growing trees, so John, I understand you're a forester, so you may feel shed some light on how quickly they'll grow, but it gets pretty dense pretty quick, especially if you don't thin them out later down the road. And then, so from a sound perspective, the project is actually extremely quiet, unlike this microphone. And during operations from the property lines, it won't exceed fifty decibels, it's basically a humming dishwasher, but it will be unaudible. There's really very minimal moving parts to the project, there's no fuel to operate it. Basically, it'll be on a, what we call a single axis tracker, so it'll be oriented from north to south. And so when the sun rises in the east, the panels will be facing that sun, and then it'll be a capacitor that sort of operates just like a windshield wiper, and over time it just clicks over following the sun and moves very slowly, it's like watching grass grow. And then when the sun sets in the west, it'll reset and they'll be pointing east again for when it rises again. So that's basically, that's the only moving parts of the whole project area. The inverters do make a slight hum, like I said, those are located on the interior of the project to make sure folks can't hear them, so it'll be quiet. And then the inverters are really the only thing that make noise. And so from a traffic perspective, like I said, we'll be prohibiting construction traffic on Georgia Creek Road and Quail Run Lane to make sure that those neighborhoods are, you know, protected from the construction traffic. And then from the project entrances, we did coordinate with BDOT to make sure that we have all adequate site stopping distances so it'll be safe for the public. And so when we do have construction traffic, you know, we'll have folks out there coordinating and we'll be coordinating heavily with BDOT to make sure that all the entrances are to standard and that our construction traffic management plan is safe and secure. And then I already spoke to wildlife corridors, and then the last thing I'll mention here, this is just a few things of the many commitments that we've made in our conditions and also in our application, the decommissioning, so this will be a forty year life, this project, and so at the conclusion of its useful life, the project will be fully decommissioned, the panels will be pulled off, the racking will be pulled up out of the ground, it'll be completely restored back to its original state. If the landowner wishes, we can actually leave the access roads that we provided, sometimes they prefer that because we put in pretty nice roads. And so it's possible the warehouse would ask us to say, please leave the roads, we like the entrances. But other than that, we'll fully decommission the project and it can be returned to whatever use the landowner, or whether it's warehouse or a different landowner down the road, whatever use they want to do, if they want to farm, if they want to build a wedding venue, if they want to replant for, you know, pines for the next forty years, it'll be completely possible for that to happen. There's nothing that would preclude them, this land would be completely useful at the conclusion of its well of its life as a solar project and it would continue to be available. So to the next slide, please. This is a comparison of a solar project that we've done. So you can see here the panels are sort of nicely oriented, north to south and organized. In the bottom of the picture, that's a retention pond, it's a stormwater feature, we would also have that for this project. What that does is it's basically designed to catch stormwater runoff, slow it down, trap the sediment, and keep it from getting into the wetlands. We would have that throughout the project area, and those are actually illustrated in our site plan that we submitted. And then you'll see, in between the two solar arrays, you have the first one, and then there's another one on the other side of the hill, you see the trees there. And so similar to this project, this project that we're looking at had wetlands, and that was a stream and a wetland, and so that was sort of cutting through the area. That would also be a wildlife corridor, and we would set back off of that, just like you see on this one, we would set back off of that. And so those riparian buffers and those streams and wetlands would be, would be preserved and maintained. And so on top of the stormwater features, that also does a lot to ensure proper water quality to the local watershed. So if, if we go to the next slide, please. This is just a closer look of that first array. Like I said, it's a very simple construction, it's basically the same steel that you'd see on like guardrails along the highway that gets plugged into the ground, and then there's wrapping system that's mounted on top of those, and then we have solar panels wrapped on those. And you can see the collector line that I was speaking to. All of that is really just daisy chained together and then, and then is sort of neatly organized and then ran to the inverters. And if you go to the next slide, so this is an area before they actually had installed the racking and the panels. This is where they've just driven the steel piles into the ground. You can see. You can see some areas where they've just even used the natural topography of the land. We can build on slope. We can build up, up to fifteen percent grade. And so it actually sometimes even benefits the project when there's a little bit of slope. And so you can see here where we just drove the piles into the ground. And, and then the next step is you get a crew that starts to install the wrapping and then another crew to come and install the panels. So that kind of just gives you an idea of like what construction might look like. This was in the, right in the middle of construction are these photos. And so that's the conclusion of the presentation. I probably went a lot longer than I wanted to, but we leave any time for questions that you guys have. Thank you for having me here, here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if that's okay?
Oh, no.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So you mentioned decommissioning. So the Clean Economy Act was pretty ambitious on its renewables. Let's say in ten or fifteen years, the demand has gone down from this project based on some of the new players in the game across the state. And you don't need to export as much energy from this site. Is there a potential that you would reduce output or decommission on demand? Let's say, you know, you need to cut down to using eight hundred acres instead of twelve hundred. Is, is that a possibility of asking? Because I don't know enough about solar energy.
Um, no. So what we've done is we filed a queue position with AEP for a hundred and forty-nine point five megawatts. It was actually originally on one eighty, but we reduced it to one forty-nine point five. And so we're, we're going to be capped at that, but we will plan to build a hundred and forty-nine point five megawatts.
For the entire forty-year?
Yes, for the entire forty-year project. And that'll be, that'll be, the power of that project will be sold. So we'll be contractually on the hook to provide that power. Otherwise, we'll suffer financially. And, and so we're incentivized to continue to like put a hundred and forty-nine point five megawatts on the grid every year. Because somebody's paying for it and anticipating that power. And then also, speaking earlier about who the owner, the eventual owner of the project might be. It's a hundred and ninety million dollar investment. And if somebody spends a hundred and ninety million dollars for a solar project, the whole goal of the project is to generate electricity and as much electricity as possible. And so they would want that operating at full capacity for its entire forty-year lifespan. If it's not, then they would basically be losing money.
Thank you.
So changing back from the one eighty to a hundred and forty-nine, and what does that do for you?
Uh, so we did that as a result of capacity on, on the grid. The gentleman before me had spoke to this a little bit. But there's been a big influx of independent power producers like ourselves that are trying to install, bring renewable energy to the Commonwealth. In order to bring your project online, you have to file what's called a queue position. Basically get it on, you're grabbing your ticket at the DMV and you're waiting your turn. They study your project based on your estimated capacity. And we have a very advanced electrical engineering side to our company where we look at that and we model where there may be open capacity in different pockets of the state. And that's exactly, you know, one of the reasons how we located this project is at first we thought that there might be about a hundred and eighty megawatts of open, open capacity on this line. But we later realized, wait, this is actually only about a hundred and fifty megawatts. And so we reduced our capacity to match that open capacity. That way we don't have to pay for additional upgrades, which can get extremely expensive if there's no open capacity on it. Just to give it the perspective, you know, there have been other projects where I've worked on where we were charged network upgrades for our project and we're on the hook for that. It's not the ratepayers. We're an independent power producer, so we build a substation. If there's not additional capacity on the lines, we got to pay for that. So we would have to pay for twenty miles, one thirty-eight KV, you know, upgrading that to make sure that it's robust enough to handle all the extra power that we're bringing on. And so that can be sometimes fifty to, I've even seen it, a billion dollars in network upgrades that would, that would be required to bring your project online. This project doesn't have that. And it's because of our advanced engineers that really know the model and then our ability to reduce that capacity so that we can hit the sweet spot. And so this is a legitimate opportunity for Buckingham County where there's a lot of counties all over Virginia that don't, they don't have any capacity. I live in Fluviana County. I'd love to put a solar project in Fluviana County, but there's no capacity in Fluviana County for the projects that we want to do. So y'all are poised with this opportunity where you're sort of blessed with this capacity. And, and we Apex have the expertise to take advantage of that and provide a project that would be a win-win for the county and for us.
I have a question. I noticed on your presentation on, on the perimeter of it, you had some forty, is it forty-foot right of ways you need to go around and get for the, from the landowners? I mean, all the way around the perimeter? How is this going to affect these landowners? What do they think of this? Are they going to give you a forty-foot right of way? Am I wrong about that? You need all of these right of ways from these landowners?
Um, no. So, well, could you go back to the owner of the site design? So there's, there's one instance where we do need a forty, exactly a forty-foot right of way. And that's for AEP. Because we're building them an interconnection switching station. They will eventually be the owner, but we have to bear the cost of that. One more. Um, we have to bear the cost of that. And so we'll buy that property. We'll transfer it to AEP. We'll give them a brand-new substation. And we'll also give them a forty-foot deeded access right of way so that they can maintain it. And we pay for all that. And so what we're looking at, I think is what we're referring to, is that forty-foot right of way that we're giving AEP. And we'll deed that over to them so that they can continue to maintain and operate their substation the way that they want to operate it.
And that will have to go through all of these landowners' home, right by their homes. The way I'm looking at it.
Um, could you?
On the west side where you have the two red, red dots there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
All the way through there, you're going to have to, you're going to be asking these people for a forty-foot right of way.
I see what you're saying. No, no. So we won't be changing any of the right of ways to any of the neighboring landowners or anything like that. Internally, I, I think some of the access roads we have proposed as forty-foot right of ways. But we have, everything you see in blue where we have our proposed project area, we have all of that leased. So we have, we have site, what we call site control over that. But we have a partnership with Warehouse Company and we've signed a contract with them to allow us to do this. And so it would actually only be one landowner and it would be Warehouse. And those forty-foot right of ways would be installed so that we can get our equipment in and around the project area. I thought you were referring to the AEP, like deeded right of way that we would provide them, but that would be our right of ways on our, on our property.
I don't quite understand, but the way, way it seems to me, you need to go around a lot of people's property and it looks like it's going to upset a lot of people. I don't know if you contacted those people or not. But all down in this, on this west side, I know this area very well.
Yeah.
It's a lot of people down in that area. I, I think it, it looks like it's going to upset a lot of people unless you've already contacted them.
So we've, I mentioned this earlier. We've prohibited, we're committing to not using those roads during construction. So there wouldn't be a single car to come through Georgia, Georgia, it's Quail Run Lane and Georgia Creek Road. Single car associated Riverstone would not come through there during construction.
Up and down Humminburg Lane when you go into the dead end. Showing it going right through there.
Yeah, that's an operations and maintenance road. And so once the construction of the project has concluded, then we would just use that road for operations and maintenance, which would be about one to two pickup trucks a week, really just for cutting the grass and getting into that western side of the project when they need to. But it would be very minimal traffic. And, and that, those, those landowners would see pretty much no change in their, in their daily lifestyles. They would see no additional traffic. In fact, they would actually see less traffic because Warehouse isn't, is no longer using those road, would, would no longer be using those roads with logging trucks. Because it would be logged and it would just be a solar drive.
There would be a road, right?
A road already exists, correct.
Steve, have you seen this particular? It shows the property owners? There's a lot of people down in that area where it goes all through the perimeter too. That's what I'm saying. If it won't impact those people, that's, that's the main one.
Right, yeah. So those two specific neighborhoods that you referred to, we have a very unique design feature that would make sure that they're not impacted. And to your point, there are landowners surrounding the project area. Some of them are probably here tonight or watching this video. I've sent them letters. We, we held a community meeting back in June. I'm happy to meet with anybody. We plan to hold more community events. There's going to be a number of hearings associated with this local process. Outside of this local process, there's also state processes where we have to do additional public hearings. There's a lot of permitting that's associated with this. And, and we'll be coordinating with these landowners, you know, throughout that entire process. One thing that I will note is much of the surrounding areas, the non-participating property owners that are adjoining our project area, much of that property is wooded. And then on top of that, there does exist topography on this site. And then you have the wetlands that are sort of dividing the area too. And so the project gets broken up really quick. And so if you're just sitting on the, you know, a neighboring property owner and you're looking at it, not only is there going to be fifty-foot of screening, but then there's going to be a fence. And then you might see a couple acres of solar panels. But then you might have a wetland that cuts in and they can't really see past that, right? And, and so the natural topography of the land is going to kind of prevent a lot of viewshed impacts. And they would sort of have to be standing right on their property line and really try to look through it to, to see it. Now, on Paint's Pond Road where you're driving right through the center of it, you know, if, if the trees aren't as, as tall as we want them to be when it comes time to start construction, then we'll take the warehouse or pines out and we'll replant the screening to make sure that it's had the screening there. But there is an opportunity to potentially just leave that screen, that, those planted warehouse or pines right there. Because when we start construction in, say, right, like November of twenty-twenty-two, which is when we're proposing this sort of construction, it's likely those pines will probably be about this tall.
You wish it.
John will probably tell them it's not wrong.
They're about this tall right now, or they weren't thirsty.
I think that, I think they grow about two feet a year. And I may be wrong, but depending on the fertilizer you use, it could be. But if it's not, we've committed planning screening there to make sure that it's screened. So for the, for the folks that do drive through that gravel county road, whether it's the post office or the landowners that live back there or the school buses, you know, that, the project will even be screened from there as well.
There's right many houses back through there.
There are right many houses. I've, I've been through there quite a bit, yeah.
A lot of houses.
Yeah, but we won't actually, that's another point too. I haven't really even mentioned it, but Paint's Pond Road continues all the way to twenty. So we won't use any of that. As soon as, as soon as our project area ends, there's going to be no traffic beyond that, all the way down Paint's Pond Road into twenty. Because that's a, that's a rough road. It's not in great shape. There's a, there's a, I think there's a bridge, construction bridge there that wouldn't even support most of our infrastructure. So we would plan to access everything off of Bridgeport Road and then just the part of Paint's Pond Road where, where it sort of divides our project. And it's more than likely actually that a lot of, a lot of the gravel on Paint's Pond Road, we would leave it in much better, much better shape than it's currently in. Because we would have to make it much more robust to bring all of our equipment in and make sure that, you know, there's, there's not like those, those waveings that are created when you've, when you've got a lot of traffic on it. We'd smooth all that out. Any culverts that need to be reinforced, we would do that as well. And so it's more than likely we'd leave it in much better condition than it's currently in.
Okay, I've got two more quick questions. I know Ryan wants to go home. Your wildlife corridors that you had there on the maps, you had mentioned ecologists earlier. Did they help you guys come up with those? So there's a few family farms back there. I spent a good bit of time on some of those myself. But are these natural migration patterns that the ecologists had done? Or was this like, let's just throw in some trees, you know, maybe the deer will go through here kind of thing?
So we, we have a team of in-house experts. We call them subject matter experts. But we have environmentalists with Apex. And so I, I helped develop these with them. Some of them were just natural wetland areas that just happened to divide the whole project, right? And that was like an easy one. You can just call out wildlife corridor, right? There were some areas where we did modify our designs just to, just to create more contiguous routes through the project area. But I can't, I can't say that this is, you know, a migration pattern. I mean, normally if you look at it from a geographical perspective, migration patterns are sort of much larger. Like you have the Chesapeake Bay watershed where you have dogs coming.
But this does follow some natural wetlands?
It follows all of, all of, mostly natural wetlands. And so that's kind of where you're going to find all the bucks and turkeys anyways. But yeah, it does, this fall exists in the woods.
And then my second question was about the jobs after the initial pulse. Your operations there in Charlotte'sville, which has been impressive, by the way. You had mentioned, I think, maybe six jobs full-time. So if most of the remote monitoring is done and you're just talking about people that come to cut the grass or what sort of full-time jobs would be here in the county?
Yeah, mainly be landscaping. You know, it's just the reality of it. It's, it's really low maintenance project. Sitting there harvesting the sun to create energy. You know, every now and then we might have some broken panels or, you know, something happened where we need to come in and like replace an array or something like that. And we'll, we'll have specialized folks that are on the team that are, that are able to do that. But for the most part, yeah, it'll, it'll just be, you know, making sure the fences are good, making sure the stormwater features are cleaned out and they're not full of sticks and, you know, not operating properly. And making sure that, you know, we're, we're mowing all the roads in between all the solar panels and so that the grass is, is low. Because if you get it growing up tall, it'll start to shade the panels and then it'll inhibit your energy production and you don't want that. And so most of it will be landscaping and maintenance like that, yeah.
I do have a question because with the jobs, I think the term was six full-time equivalent jobs. So that could just be part-time employees, not really full-time, six full-time jobs after the project is completed.
Yeah, I mean, six full-time equivalent is a term that's used to, well, yeah, it could be, say, twelve part-time jobs, right? But if you combine all those, we estimate about six full-time equivalent jobs for all the maintenance and operations of the project.
And you have a place for local vendors to sign up?
That's correct.
So where do you anticipate the people work? Your work is coming from, coming from Buckingham?
Uh. It, it's, yeah. So there's a big construction sector in Buckingham, as you're aware of. There's also solar training programs too, the trade schools. And then also not just folks that are going to be putting in the panels or operating the, the dozers, there's going to be like aggregate, right? For instance, Buckingham Slate Box and Corrid. So we've used them in the past for our solar projects. And Buckingham Slate Corrid is right down the road in Arbonia. You know, so there are, you know, larger vendors like that that, that would benefit from, from this project as well.
And in your community engagement, you said you had a public meeting or invite? And do you anticipate more or just that was it?
No, it's, it's, it's likely that we'll have at least another one. And it will be, I've been speaking with the supervisor about it. It's possible that we'll do it in person, maybe into volunteer fire department. But, you know, we, we would want to have probably another one, you know. But to date, I haven't received many communications from neighboring landowners. It's been relatively quiet. But I'm certain that once this process is initiated, even though we've done a lot of work up to here, it's likely I'll start to receive more calls. And so it's good to do a public meeting, just like an informational open house where folks can come in and ask questions. We can bring folks from other various teams, like our environmental department, our engineers, myself, other developers, just to ask or answer, answer questions that, that folks may have.
And the twenty thousand dollars under the community grants are paid. That is operational now or will be operational pending?
Yeah, so that's a cool program that we started doing for most of our projects. And for this one, to date, we've, we've committed twenty. And for this one, to date, we've committed 20,000. It's not by any means a cap. It's just what we've committed to so far. And so local vendors can go onto our website and they can apply for that grant funding. And so we'll take all the applications. We'll probably distribute it by December. But it's targeted on sustainability and conservation, STEM education or public land access, you know. Folks that have, there you go. Yeah, I encourage you to apply to it. And we've been, we've been reaching out to folks and making sure they're aware. It's part of the Facebook page to make sure folks know how to apply and that this grant funding is out there, so.
I didn't see a timeline on it. That was, I was just curious about that.
Well, it kind of depends on really the influx of applications. Like if between now and December we don't get any applications, then we'll have to probably keep waiting. But if we start to get some applications, then it makes sense to choose somebody. It would be my role to choose someone by December.
Said, oh, you wanted to cover with us this evening? I'm not trying to get you to talk more. I'm just trying to say, say pretty much conclude what you wanted to do or do you want to keep going?
Yes, sir. I'm here to be helpful and answer any questions y'all have. So if you don't have any additional questions and I can conclude tonight. You have my number. It's in the application. I also have some business cards I brought here. So if you don't want to flip through 1,800 pages of applications, you can call or email me anytime. Also plan to attend the meeting that you all are proposing next week. Trying not to screw up Jamie's cords here. And answer any other questions. It's an open forum and we're here to just help make the process easy. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, that brings up reports.
I don't have the administrative report and the building works, report. The building permit report, excuse me, wasn't included back in. I just have one question just for housekeeping. They're moving forward with a work session Monday, August 30th at 7:00 PM here in Peter Francisco meeting.
Everybody understand that?
Yeah, vote with them.
August 30th.
Next Monday.
Seven o'clock.
Is it seven? I believe that's what, 7:00 PM is a question.
So it's next Monday night?
Work for everyone?
Seven o'clock, I assume.
Yeah. Commission matters. Do we have any?
Yes, sir.
Only thing I'd like to tell you is we have a resignation from Ms. Thomas. Thomas, I said Thomas, I'm sorry. She was Thomas at one time and now she's gone. Yeah, so she sent a lot of resignation. I guess I'll take it back to the board for to accept your resignation and with pick somebody else.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Oh, excuse me.
Tonight's action would need to be recessed to re-convince your work session Monday, August 30th at 7:00 PM.
Do we need to vote on that? We have a motion.
Take a motion.
To reconvene.
Reconvene on Monday night, 7:00.
Second. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, six, six. Thank you all for coming.